So at this point, while she's bringing up, is there any questions? Anybody has this point? Nicole?
Well, first, I want to congratulate you on the progress at the airport. You've been a breath of fresh air, and I've heard nothing but good things about the airport and what you've been doing there.
Thank you.
Now, you did mention that with the parachute flying, you're able to take people for rides. Is there any opportunities for, let's say, someone to purchase a plane ride just to fly around and land at the airport?
Yes. The FAA has some real specific rules on that, and the flight school is allowed to do that one or two times a year. If you come to the pancake breakfast, they will have that opportunity. And then in the fall, there's a color tour that they can do. So on 12 July, you can come, go to the pancake breakfast, and then you can also purchase a sightseeing trip to go up for an airplane ride.
I'm interested in this. How many people can the plane hold?
Four. Well, three, because you have the pilot. Yeah. So yeah, most of them are three. If somebody has their twin engine in there, you might be able to get up to six, but generally figure on three going up. Any other questions?
Questions. Commissioner Tennyson?
Kind of a statement, seeing as how John and I are on this board. I will say there's a renewed enthusiasm out there at the airport now. People want to be there, and they want to go out there. He's getting calls daily on hangar space. He's getting, if you just look at the funerals alone, that tells you how much activity is out there. And I personally want to thank Gino for all of his efforts, because there was a lot of fences that needed to be mended out there, and he's done a really good job about it.
Thank you.
You know, there wasn't always a lot of transparency out there in the past, and I think now people feel at ease to go there, and they're enjoying it now. I don't know if John's got something to say, but...
Commissioner Smolker?
I like the idea that all the hangars are full, that I know of, and there is a waiting list, so...
We have about seven people on our waiting list right now to move into our hangars, so...
There's people that inquire about building hangars, too, so, and businesses.
How much of the 240 acres does the airport actually encompass, and how much is unused space at this point?
That's an excellent question that I don't have an answer to. There's what we call aeronautical and non-aeronautical use. A good portion of the airport is a hill that goes down to the river, and that would be non-aeronautical use. We also encompass the racetrack. That's part of the airport property, so that's like a big bowl that we wouldn't be able to use. Aside from that, I'm going to say we're probably about 65% full. The problem is infrastructure, so if I were to, if you come out, I'd be happy to show you on the maps. I would need, like, taxiways and electrical, if you will, so that I could build hangars in other areas, but we have that. The nice thing that I've learned is that our non-aeronautical use stuff, say that racetrack, if a business wanted to come in and use that, it has nothing to do with aviation, we legally can bring them in there. I just have to send certain parameters into the FAA, and we could actually build out there, which would again be revenue stream for the airport to grow the airport. And the FAA encourages us to do that with non-aeronautical use items, that we just, it would just cost so much, it would kind of cost prohibitive at this time to use an area like that. So, you know, there's already a road there, it's already flat, it's already, you know, there's some stuff that's already done. Does that answer your question to a degree?
Yeah, absolutely. The $500,000 taxiway project?
Yes.
Is that paid for by the FAA?
Yes, we have a matching fund that we have to put in for that. I don't have everything on that right now, because that's happening in the fall, all the letters were signed, but our matching funds should be right around 5%, because that's covered. Our terminal building was a little bit different, and the reason that has higher numbers is because there's areas that are required, like stairwells, closets, and a manager's office, that are not covered by the FAA. So we have to cover 100% of that, and then we also have to cover 100%. So the terminal building comes out to be more like 20%, 30% for the building. It's kind of weird on the formulas how they have them, so...
Okay, is there a federal or state formula, because you're having medevac flights in and out of there, military, is there some compensation the airport gets for that use?
I wish.
Okay.
I would, you know, I've talked to our new county EMS guy, his name escapes me at the moment, Patrick, thank you. And Patrick was coming up with a plan to maybe talk to Cornwell, I don't want to speak out of school, because that, we're actually dedicating a portion of our ramp space specifically for them. So because there's so much flying on, he had thought, or flying going into that ramp area, he had thoughts of talking to them and maybe getting together. That's purely speculation at this point. It'd be very nice, because, like I said, we are dedicating something specifically for them, so no matter what event I have, I can't park airplanes there, I can't do anything else, because those medevacs just show up at any given time. You know, we've had them back-to-back two weeks ago, in this, you know, gone out, come back, gone out, come back, and it's just happening, seems like it's happening more and more.
Okay. Thank you. And of course, you know, the question I always ask you is with all that property and all those dangerous sandhill cranes and deer running around.
Horrible, Walter, yes.
Horrible. So, you know, if you ever need any help from commissioners, it's elimination and control. You just let us know, we're here for you.
Separation, we call it, separation, yes, thank you. Which we have all the licensing for, if anybody's...
There you go. There you go. Additional questions or comments from commissioners?
I'm actually not done.
Continue on.
That was just till they brought that back up, but we got the end done first here. So one of the events that I spoke about, just doing it again. Can you click forward? There we go. This is our haunted hangars. This one, I'm really proud of. This was kind of mostly my wife's idea, and then I took credit for it, so... What we did was, we got all the pilots together as a community, and on Halloween, we opened the airport up, we put the airplanes out there, and it was trick-or-treating. We did it on a shoestring budget, and it came up pretty cool. We expected maybe 150, 200 kids, that's what we had in the first 10 minutes, and we had over 400 that night through the different counties. We were counting them in one area, and then we realized they weren't coming through the building, and Louis was counting them as they were coming through the airplane, so he had over 400. We had two golden tickets that were put out there for free flights, one of them was claimed. We don't know what happened to the other one. We had given away bags of kettle corn that we made at the airport called a prop corn, and only one kid must have ate his bag, because he found it. We have, the parents liked it, and this is kind of, we got a lot of positive feedback on this, and the feedback was they could pretty much let the children run free out there at the airport, so that was nice. They didn't have to worry about cars or anything else, the way I had the ramp sectioned off, they'd get tired before they got to the part that was blocked off. And I literally had tear-filled parents coming up and saying, "Thank you for letting my kids come touch the airplanes, why are the pilots doing this?" Because usually, everything in aviation costs money. And this time here, it all came out of the pilots' pockets, and it was just a really neat thing to see all the stuff that went on. We're going to do the same thing this year. I believe the city fire department wants to get involved with it, and then the Army Guard has also called us about possibly getting a helicopter out there. We've been in touch with people on balloons, so we want to grow this. We're going to shorten the time this year, so it'll only be two hours long. It's a little dark, we don't have a lighted ramp, so it's just something that's really neat, and gives the kids a chance to interact with pilots and see that they're not all millionaires that are out there, that a lot of these guys are just, you know, instead of snowmobiles, they choose airplanes. Big concern lately in the news has been safety. Seems like every time you turn on the TV, airplane's crashing somewhere in the world, which, reality, I put this in, the media's making it seem worse than what it really is. As you can see, for 2025, it's kind of hard to see up there. January, there were 62 accidents. This is not at our airport, this is worldwide, or anything, it's nationwide. And in February, there was 26 versus the previous year, they were all pretty much higher than all the other years that are in there. So we're on a decline in reality, but the media's making it seem like it's worse than it is. Our pilots, we are non-controlled, which means our pilots have radios, and they self-report. That radio's on, I can hear them all the time in there. And then they have another system called ADS-B, which is Automatic Dependent Surveillance Broadcast. In other words, if the pilots aren't talking to each other, the airplanes are talking to each other, and then it'll let them know, "Hey, somebody's in your area, you're within so many hundred feet," or anything like that. So that's a, it's a great system, so we are safe at the airport, and every month, there's safety briefings that are going on. And then if there is a major problem, we have Grand Rapids Approach that's out there. The last thing that I want to show you, this is kind of interesting, and this is what I think that really will pay off for you folks. What this is here, is, did it start? Can you hit start there or something?
Yeah, it started.
It started?
It passed.
No, there we go. Yeah, no, that's fine. So what this is, is this is data that I, we got, and it's off of what they call flight plans, that commercial guys have to operate under, the commercial operators will put out there as a flight plan. I left out two other pieces of data, which are the ADS-B that we talked about, and then also, there's another tracking system. Because I wanted to show you revenue generating flights. What you're looking at is our little airport, and every time the airplane goes to a state, the state will light up, and then as they go to multiple, that airport multiple times, what you'll see is that dot will get bigger and bigger and bigger. It's kind of hard to see inside the state of Michigan what's going on, but our dots are getting bigger. You could see up in Wisconsin, there's an area, I'm sorry, Minnesota. Now, what this represents, too, is this shows you how industry that's based here is utilizing airports. In other words, we're manufacturing base here, but these are customers or other plants that they may have that they're flying into. So our small little airport is starting to generate some, generate some business. As we get through June, July here, and I'm sure you can guess who the manufacturers It doesn't get much better, but it gets pretty, much more exciting, I should say. But you could see how we're starting to reach out and touch more states. Now we start getting into August, and, I'm sorry, October, when we get down into October, what you'll see is how many pilots took seats out of their airplanes and on their own filled them up full of supplies and flew them down to the hurricane victims. So that's kind of neat, too, that we have that actually going on out here. You can see the bigger spots, especially up in Minnesota, that's Mensch Manufacturing, so you can see, again, people employed here, but we're... Did it stop? It's getting slower. Can you make it go to the end? Let's get a little warm-up here.
Well, that's on, Gino.
Sure.
When we have the military come in and practice, and at one time, they were coming in with night maneuvers.
Yes.
And some of the neighbors got a little upset, so we contacted, and most of them are out of Grand Ledge, right?
Yes.
And contacted them, and they did, they worked with us. They still will come in at night, but they'll come in earlier at night, not after midnight and stuff. So the military will work with us out there, and they like Hastings Airport to work with.
The approach to Hastings, I don't know where it's at in the Middle East, but the approach is very similar with the terrain and everything else. That's why they like to practice there. When I was in the Air Force, and I know that the Grand Rapids Approach was the exact same as one place in Afghanistan, and we would bring our tankers out to Grand Rapids, and they would practice that approach to get people used to the hills and everything else. If you can just go right to the end there, it'll show all the...
It's not cooperating.
No. Okay, basically, we had 31 states that showed that this, our little airport touched and generated revenue or brought revenue back in to here. So at the Hastings Airport, one of the nice things, like you said, the big takeaways I want you to take away with is, one, we're growing, we want to grow it a little bit more, that AWAS weather station will help us tremendously. Two, we generate our own money, so we're not coming back to you. If I ever have to come to you, you know there's an actual need for it, it's not just on a whim. And then lastly, we're making jobs happen, and we're keeping jobs in Hastings by being the airport out there. So that's, that's my presentation. Any questions?
Question on the AWAS.
Yes.
Will that be universally available for all the apps that we use on our phone to track weather, or is that something you will have to subscribe to or tap into?
That's an excellent question. It's actually, all of the weather apps on your phone get their weather from NOAA, so NOAA and the FAA own that system per se, okay, own the operate. We maintain it, we keep it going. So that information will be disseminated through all the apps, but there's no AWAS app that I'm aware of at this time that you can log into and get just Hastings. All of your apps will be getting information from that, so it's kind of like the internet. It's, it's just disseminated through all different apps.
So AWAS is tied into NOAA, which could be tied into your phone, just...
Yeah, which is tied into your phone, yeah. Most of the stuff on your phone and what you watch on TV, like whenever they show the different weather reporting, okay, those really aren't weather stations, that's kind of brought, data brought together, and then if there's a weather station at that airport or in that town, then that's what you'll see, you'll get actual real-time data. So you'll have real-time data once that system's installed. You'll just, the way you'll notice it is it'll be improved. Your phone will all of a sudden be accurate, a lot more than what it was before, so...
Weather not accurate? What are you talking about?
Just saying. It could change.
Okay, and that's coming, you think, at some point this year?
Yeah, all the approvals have been done, I kind of, this is something that I was pushing, so we got approval in December to use my airport funding, my federal funding for that. They came out in January, the system was approved, it's sitting on the FAA's desk right now, it has to go through all of their approval processes. Like, there's, with airports, there's a ton of agencies that have to sign off on everything, and that's in the stage that it's at. And then this fall is when they're expecting to build the station, they say 90 days to build the station, and that'll be...
What's the footprint? Is it 50 miles, is it 100-mile radius?
For what the weather is, or?
Yeah, for, how much, for local weather, how big of a footprint is the tracking?
It's really, it's the airport that's right there, and from that, they put that together with other data, and that's how you get trends. But it'll give real-time, accurate information at the airport, clouds, winds, which is very important to the guys that are flying in, let's say, on, under the jets, or even one of the bigger twin-engine airplanes. When they're coming back, they can also have that data in the airplane, which you really don't get right now, because we don't have that system. We have to call the Grand Rapids Approach and say, "Hey, what's the weather?" And then you call, or then you listen to the weather for Kalamazoo, and then you figure out, is it safe to land when the winds are out of the north up here and out of the south down there? Figure, okay, what's it going to be when I get to Grand Rapids?
Interesting.
Or into Hastings, so...
There's no questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Getty?
So just a comment, the schedule of events, I think you've just done a phenomenal job of hitting multiple age groups and getting people out, you know, you're not just, you know, the guys coming in for coffee and cookies and donuts or whatever, but really, that outreach to the younger part of our population, it's phenomenal. So you're doing a great job, and I want to get my name on the power parachute ride.
You want to get your name, all right, we'll let them know. And then, I feel bad, I was supposed to do this in the beginning, but I actually have Marcus Newton with me, he's my job shadow today. He's out of Berry County Christian, so I wanted to give him credit. Why he would want to look at being an airport manager, I don't know, but he's with me today till 1:30, and I should have mentioned his name at the very beginning, sorry about that. But you mentioned age groups, that, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, oh, in the Aviation Academy at Kent County Airport, do you have any experiences with those students at all in a regional airport?
On the regional side, not really. We've, we own that motorhome that was made out of the airplane, so we have brought that to the Aviation Academy, and so they could explore and ask the engineering questions that kids have, but that's about the only contact that we've had with them. I'll be honest, too, the building is taking up a tremendous amount of time in these projects. There's a reason why they only do one of these every three years. So I, once the building is done, I'll have a better, I'll have more time, and then I'll be able to expand a little bit more to other people.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have one comment. I like the way Gino does things, he keeps the board well involved. I got a phone call just the other day where somebody drove through the fence and just missed an airplane. It was a medical condition, but I like the way he keeps the board informed.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming in and sharing this information, that's very encouraging to see all the positive changes out there, so...
Well, thank you, and you're all still awake, so that's really good.
Marcus, thanks for coming along today, too. Nice to see you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Gino, have a good day.
Next on our agenda is a public hearing for the Property Assess Clean Energy or PACE program. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing, and anybody wishing to speak either in favor of the PACE program or against the PACE program, you have three minutes if you would like to share an opinion with the board.
Can it just be for questions, then?
You can ask a question, and then we'll have some deliberation after the public hearing is closed.
Can I ask a question to that? Copper Rock? I want to ask a question to him.
We'll let them up when we're doing the deliberation, we'll have them. Public hearing is for comments.
Yeah, I got you.
EDA Board, Vice Chair Hatfield is consultant, Chair Jackson, Commissioner sits on the, you know, and at large, Commissioner Getty for Be Healthy. Sort of puts an unfair bias towards the elected positions as to the EDA Board positions. County Administrator Zizga is being used, in my opinion, by the EDA as an employee, preparing and presenting, and it's evident, has many hours and maybe days all on the taxpayers' expense. Looking at the PACE packet, it places an unwanted burden on government, which is a burden on the taxpayers. This is also a political issue, more than a real tool with Energy Lean and Green Michigan. We're looking at a lot of things that are being taken away with those coming in at the national level, and with all the fraud that comes along with a lot of these government Copper Rock Construction could do many of these things, you know, without having, that they had to deliver without a single property special assessment from Berry County. The bigger concern is the lack of knowledge in how large this amount could grow to. There's no limitations on it, there's things that, you know, a dollar amount, when I talk about limitations. There's other things that should, property, if changed hands, should that special assessment be paid off at that time? Has County Legal looked at the documents that you're presenting and looking at? Painful, yeah. The new county administration, administrator, treasurer, registrar of Ds are in a transition period and do not need this at this time. Denying or at least tabling this request for at least six months to get more information gathered. You look at what happened at the last meeting, what was on the agenda about the executive assistant, it seems like your county administrators' time would be better spent downstairs in the third floor in that office as compared to over at the EDA. So I have real concerns in that. This places a burden on the taxpayers or on the governing body here, and it can, if defaulted, which would take time, lead to the county having to deal with it. It is, most times, special assessments are done for a sewer system, they're done for a water system, they're done for a road system, that affect many. I guess my concern is, once you start doing one, do you do others at the same time, or how does that work? Am I against it? Absolutely. Once again, I think we're spending too much taxpayer time and dollars on our county administrator being over there with the EDA, and we really need to look at the accounting, the things, the updates that need to be around here. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments, either for or opposed to?
Hi there. I am opposed to this, at least tabling it. Give some more time to research this PACE program. I've read that, I'd like to see numbers, and I hope you would, too, on utility costs, because I read it may not save much on utility costs. What kind of numbers are there? I looked in the contract, I don't know if Copper Rock is receiving some kind of referral fee from the lender, but I've read that that's quite a possibility in that happening, and if so, that is a conflict of interest, so that needs to be learned if that's happening. Oh, I read all assessment fees will go to the lender, but I do have a concern that in the contract on page six, second paragraph, it says county funds will be used to repay any PACE special assessment placed into this program. So I, in short, I would hope that maybe it could just be tabled for a little bit and dig into it just a little bit higher, see the numbers, why this makes sense, to enter into this, pros versus cons, and the risk. So I just ask that it be tabled for a little while. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional comments for the public hearing?
Hello, my name is Nicole Lake, I'm here with the Berry County Chamber and EDA, and I just want to make a couple of statements. Specifically, the section that you referenced there is actually a typo there, that is supposed to say, "None of those things are covered." So we did catch that and get that correction to Eric, so that has actually been addressed. The other thing that I want to mention is, these projects only qualify for PACE funding if they can show that there is a cost savings. It's not, there's no question about that, it has to be demonstrated, there's a formula that they follow that shows what those cost savings are, and if they're not met, those metrics aren't met, then it doesn't qualify for the funding to begin with. The other thing to note is that the county does have the ability to set a maximum amount that they are willing to lend under these programs or approve as part of these programs. So it's not necessarily going to be a program where somebody comes in and says, "We have a $10 million project, and we want $8 million of it to be covered by PACE, because..." Functionally, that's not how these programs work, they're very limited on the things that they're allowed to cover. They're only allowed to cover a certain percentage of those eligible costs, I believe it's 25%. And so it's not necessarily, necessarily a lending free-for-all. It's a very structured program and very limited. The other thing to note is that it is up to the county ultimately to decide whether or not to approve one of these, one of these projects, once the PACE district has been established, if it's established. So there very well may be a situation where that comes up, where you've got a product, a project, it doesn't meet the vision and the mission of the community where it's being presented, it doesn't, it's not in line with the county perspective and prerogatives, and you could deny it, and that is perfectly allowed and acceptable and encouraged under the way that this program is structured. So I just wanted to clarify a few of those points. Mary is here to answer any additional questions, so, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Additional comments? For or against the PACE program?
Again, Greg Taylor with Copper Rock Construction. I don't want to repeat myself, but all of the things that I said earlier, I'd like to reemphasize that we are in support of this. And I would also like to point out that despite all of what we hear, or may not hear, construction projects are becoming increasingly more difficult. Cost of steel's going up, cost of labor's going up, interest rates are not coming down, capitalization rates are increasing, which makes the burden of producing for-profit income projects that much more difficult. And so every possible tool that can be added to the toolbox for developers in Berry County, I think, would be very helpful, and certainly, this program, we're seeing being done all over the nation and all over the state, and again, I encourage you to move forward on this initiative. Not only is it something that would be helpful for us and for other developers moving forward in the county, it's also very timely that this is being approved at this time. So thank you again for your consideration, and we certainly support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Additional comments for the public comment, either for or against. Hearing done, we will close the public hearing at this time. Thank you all for that input. Moving on with our agenda, items for consideration, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Campbell.
Mr. Chair, I would move for the approval of claims in the amount of $141,877.46.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Campbell, support by Hatfield, for approval of claims in the amount of $141,877.46. Discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
Colton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Mr. Chairman, I would move for the adoption of Resolution Number 25-09, Resolution to Establish a Property Assess Clean Energy Program. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Campbell, support by Getty for adoption of Resolution 25-09, a resolution to establish a Property Assess Clean Energy Program. Discussion. Mary, would you like to come up and answer some questions? And I think Commissioner Tunisin, you had a question for Greg with Copper Rock?
Yeah, Copper Rock.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mary, how many active PACE groups are there in the state of Michigan right now?
Just us. But it's not because it's not an open program. Anyone could start their own PACE program if they wanted to.
I said that wrong. How many counties are currently involved?
Oh, I think there's 35 counties, and we have a total of 59 local governments, so it's about 24 cities and townships.
39 counties, okay.
Yeah.
And how long has this PACE program been established in the state of Michigan?
Since 2012.
Since 2012, okay.
The statute was passed in 2010, and then we started actualizing it as a business in 2012.
So this is not something new to the state of Michigan? There's several successful examples of PACE working throughout the state?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Questions from commissioners?
Mary, you mentioned before, right, that this, when they take this out, it is negotiable if they were to sell the property, as far as assuming the risk of the loan.
Correct.
Or they'd have to pay it off.
Correct. It would be a negotiation between the parties.
This is not, this is automatically going to go on to the person that wants to purchase the property.
Right. The buyer could dictate their terms.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Smoker.
I just want to confirm that each different project would come before us, right?
That if, you can write that, yes. You can include that in your program report. People make different decisions about that. In some cases, it's a committee, in some cases, an administrator. It can be, in many cases, it's the full board. You can, however you would like to set it up.
Here you go.
One more thing, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
It was mentioned that you can put aside a dollar limit. How would this work? That you can set a limit on how much they'd be able to borrow, or is that how that works? So there, so the way that it's set up is, is that they can borrow up to 25% of the as-completed value of the property, but because you could approve or not approve a project, you could just say, "That's too much. Too much. Too high. Too large of a loan. We're not going to approve it."
So has Copper Rock set a dollar amount that they want to?
Not that I know of. I haven't discussed the particulars with Copper Rock. Anyway, it's processed, because they have to get the energy audit to see what qualifies, and then they also have to get appraisal to see what the value, the as-completed property value is going to be, a couple of different metrics for it. And those things would dictate how large the loan even could be, to start with. And then people decide, you know, what they, what they need.
When does that process take place? After, you know, construction starts, or prior?
Prior.
Prior?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, I should say, it happens prior to any dispersal of PACE funds. They may have started the project with other funds before the PACE comes into it.
Okay. All right. Good enough.
But at some point, if a PACE project is being contemplated, it'll come back before this board for consideration of the amount and the scope of the project. Is that what I'm hearing?
If that's what you would like to do, you can, yes. That is how many people do it. People opt for different methods, but that is a common one.
Okay. So the board would have the final vote or the final say as the dollar amount that they wanted to approve it, and being able to review the scope of the project?
Correct. Yeah. I mean, just say to Administrator Zizga that we should, you know, review that language and make sure that's in there. We can do that, for sure. Most counties do do that, so.
Mr. Bassett.
So, again, on that point, those parameters are something that we build into this contract? It's not something separate?
I think it's, you know, it's in there. I think it's in there now. I'm just trying to think if the language, exactly what the language is. But there's a, you know, a process for approval that is written into there, and it has to do with the authorized official. One person is designated as the authorized official, and that authorized official decide, can say how they want it to be approved. You can write it right into that sentence to say the authorized official approves a project, or you can write it into the sentence that the authorized official with the approval of the board authorizes the project, which is how you all, sounds like you all want to do it. That's how we should do it.
Okay. Commissioner Smoker.
This is not necessarily for Mary, but it's for Eric. Is that okay?
Sure.
Our attorneys did overlook this over, right?
Yes, sir.
And wrote this on?
There were some few tweaks that they made, but they've said they've done this for multiple clients already. So, they're very familiar with the program.
And the other thing, just for pointing out, because it was brought up, I believe by Shelley, that we first started talking about PACE six or seven weeks ago. So this has been on our agenda. I think this is the third time this has been on our agenda. So Commissioners, fourth time it's been on our agenda. So Commissioners have had a chance to do a deep dive in. I know Commissioner Smoker had a lot of skepticism about this going forward. I don't know if Commissioner Tunisin and Commissioner Colton did. They've both looked into this, as we have done, more in-depth research on how this project actually works, and there's very little downside risk to this, as far as to the county goes. But, I mean, Commissioner Hatfield did a very eloquent job of explaining the banking world and how that works, how the benefits to the county and the county actually is first in line to receive funds if something would go, would go south, that we're in a priority position for any loan amounts that are being made there. So, there's a lot of security with this as well. It's structured in favor of the county, so. I don't know if you have any additional comments on that or not, but?
No. Said it well.
Okay.
I got one more question. So, before they can apply for the PACE, do they have to have approval from the primary lender that, to go ahead with this and do this?
Yes. There's a, there's a document that the primary lender has to sign. They have to understand how PACE works and how the order works, et cetera. And, yeah, it's a requirement in the state statute that the lender consent to a PACE assessment.
So the lender can basically say yes or no?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Campbell.
I too had lots of reservations when this first came about, as we should have as commissioners on anything that's new and that we are not familiar with, but as you've said, we've worked on it for six or seven weeks. We've dug into some things. I've got some answers to many of my questions. I like, for sure, the idea that this doesn't lock us in in any way. I want to make sure that's in the language, that we will have final say on any projects that come out that want to take advantage of the PACE program. But I see 135 apartments there that's at stake. Our risk is so minimal on this, if there's risk at all, to turn it down would be a failure of our job to try to provide some housing in this county. And hopefully, it'll, it'll be a step in a direction that we can provide even more housing. Those apartments will be, they'll be taking long before it's completed. We need housing, and it appears to be a good way to go.
I agree. Tighten loss is a good example of that, how quickly tighten loss were filled up, so.
Looking at the resolution, my suggestion is, if you would like to make the, so as Mary mentioned, there are two, there are a couple of different ways you could do it. You could have a reapplication just come in, reviewed by administration. If it meets the guidelines, we could do it that way. That's how it's set up now, is the administrator's the authorizing official. If you would like to make the county board chair the authorizing official, then we just need to make that change in the resolution. With the board chair looking at it, with the, you can do county board with the consent of the commission, and that means every application comes back to you for review and approval. So, pass that resolution as is, makes my office the approval, approving agency. If you make the county board chair with consent of the commission, the authorizing official, that takes care of that issue. If you guys want to see your applications, once again, I don't expect to see, I don't expect to see we open this up and we have just a run on the office. So, those, that's just a suggestion I wanted to make.
Okay. Let me ask you this. Is that a change that we could make?
Yeah, I think changing out a word like that, I think you just amend the resolution right now, and it makes the authorizing official the county board chair.
Do we need to take a five to seven minute break, make that change in the resolution so we have it official? Or you just want to change the word?
I think if you make the motion that way.
Okay.
While I was listening downstairs right now, so she'll change that in the resolution when you go decide it.
Okay.
And we'll make sure everyone gets a clean copy of it.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make sure you get clean copies of the word, where it has authorized official in there. We'll insert the name.
I don't really have any questions, but just a couple of comments. Since they first brought this here, you know, I was the one that voted no. But I have went to three different banks. I went cities, villages. I've talked to multiple individuals, and not one has had anything against this. So, I will be voting yes, but I would like it in there that comes back before us, the county chair.
Okay.
I believe I've done my due diligence as a commissioner on this, but I would like it explained again to me, because I guess I'm a little slow, that as this being on the tax roll, as a special assessment, how that money, if it is not paid, and then when it is paid, we get it first? The tax roll gets it first, before the first loan? I hate to say this, but Larry keeps shaking his head no. Makes me nervous.
I think the first key is, we don't get, every year, this is between the lender and the developer. They, we put this on the assess roll, we step away, as long as it's being paid, we're out of it.
Yes.
If it's not, if there's a default in...
Yeah, if there's a default, first they'll try to sort it out as best they can. If it can't be sorted out, which has not, has yet to happen, the, it would go on to the tax roll as, like any other tax default.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It would go through the process exactly as if someone had not paid their taxes.
And then does, say the person comes in and buys it, because it's been defaulted on? Does that person pay the county on the tax roll, or is that new buyer pay PACE? And then PACE tells us, and it comes?
They'll pick up those PACE payments. There may be other county fees, or, you know, things that are due to the county as a result of a default that's unrelated to PACE. Those would go forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Additional questions?
I just got one more comment, because right along with Bruce, we put a lot of time into this, looking into this. We've asked a lot of questions. I was a little reluctant at first, too. So, I mean, you see something new come along that you've never heard about, or anything? Okay, what is this, right? So, but after talking to Commissioner Hatfield, talking to a lot of different people in the banking industry, I'm confident in this, too, that Bruce is right. We've done our due diligence, and we have looked into this quite heavily, so I'm in favor of it, no.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Colton.
I too was very skeptical of this. It seemed really odd to me, but, you know, after the questioning, it really helped Dave explaining it, because he really understands, you know, banking. I'm confident that this is a great thing to do, not just a good thing, but I think it will really help the county.
Absolutely.
Want an amendment to the motion?
Yeah. The motion on the floor is the adoption of Resolution 25-09, a resolution to establish a Property Assess Clean Energy Program. With the addition of "all" in the resolution, we'll also have that all final projects will come before the Board of Commissioners for final approval. Is that clear?
Does the motion have to be changed?
So, was motion by Campbell, supported by Hatfield, or by Getty?
Yes.
Are you guys okay with that amendment to the motion?
I am.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Do I need to make that correction?
If you just, or you opened a friendly amendment to it.
Yes.
Then you've made that.
Yeah, you can.
I mean, do I have to rescind the original motion, or we're just going to add to it?
Yeah, just a friendly.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You ready?
Ready.
Okay. Tunisin?
Aye.
Bassett?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Mr. Chair, I would move for the adoption of Resolution 25-10, Resolution to Authorize Application for a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant for Improvements at Bailey Nature Preserve.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Campbell, support by Smoker for adoption of Resolution 25-10, a resolution to authorize application for Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant for Improvements at Bailey Nature Preserve. Discussion.
I guess I have a question, just a statement, is, now, on matching funds, can I ask you this, Catherine? It seems you're on it.
Certainly. Dan is here as well.
Oh, right. How could I miss him? Didn't see him come in.
Well, he was hiding in the back.
Hiding, huh?
You didn't see me coming?
It's to my understanding that the matching funds are in fund reserves at, this one is for Bailey, so it'd be on Parks and Rec, right?
Parks and Rec and the Bailey Endowment. So there are two, two different sources that we've identified for the matching dollars that is currently in place. That is correct.
And then you have no inkling to come back and ask for more money for matching funds on this?
That is not our intent. No. And I think I expressed that last week. I mean, we'll continue to, to try to search for additional dollars to match even what we have, so we don't have to utilize the funds that we currently have available. Honestly, John, you know, this...
That's the way I understood it.
Yeah. This program, we'll get, we should, we'll know whether we get the grant or don't get the grant probably in January of 2026. It takes an act of legislature to approve the money, which typically doesn't happen until, will not happen, I can guarantee you, will not happen until at least the middle of 2026. And then at that time, the DNR would notify us, if we're awarded, again, that we've been awarded, the funding has been obligated, and now you have to sign the agreement. That's when we would come back to the Commissioners for approval to move ahead with the program. And we'd want to show where the money's at at that time. And that's, so we're two years out, we'll work toward raising other funds, so we don't have to use the money we've got. And that's, we're doing that all the time, so, yeah.
That's the way I understood it.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion?
No, I just wanted clarification on that, too, as far as it wouldn't be coming back to us on the general fund, it was going to be coming out of the, I don't know, you're going to raise for matching funds.
That is correct. It's, it's money we already have obligated toward Parks and the endowment piece at the community foundation, so.
And again, this is an application.
Yes.
This isn't expenditure.
Just the application.
Correct.
Okay. Hearing no additional questions. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Bassett?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Bassett?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of Resolution number 25-11, resolution to authorize application for a Michigan Recreation Passport Grant for Improvement at Historic Charlton Park.
Is there support?
Support. Hatfield.
Motion by Campbell, support by Hatfield for adoption of Resolution 25-11, a resolution to authorize application for a Michigan Recreation Passport Grant for Improvements at Historical Charlton Park. Additional discussion?
I think he's already answered my question.
I think it was the same for both. The funds are in place. This is not coming out of the county general fund.
That is correct.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Colton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Bassett?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved. Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something, too. This, I think it came up that this was kind of a rushed process. So, you can go back, we started working on both these projects as a part of our master plan development a year ago. And from that, we identified these two particular projects out of our master plan. It's on the website. You can go take a look at it. The grant programs, unfortunately, fortunately however you look at it, these grant programs don't open until usually the first or second week of January. So that's the timeframe that we're stuck with. We don't create it, it's given to us. So, just so everybody knows, we're not in a vacuum over here. This takes time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business? We have none. New business? We have none. County administrators' report?
Briefly. Chair Jackson, Commissioner Bassett, and I will be attending MAC Legislative on the seventh and eighth, eighth and ninth, sorry. I assume we will still hold BOC at eight. I know we talked about that as an issue. Because it's the morning of, we'll go from there, so, just making sure that's still the plan, or if we're going to move to Monday, the seventh.
Commissioners, what have we done in the past, John?
We just, we canceled it, didn't we? But, yeah, but-
At the first or second Tuesday?
That's second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
It's a BOC.
Is that an all day?
Oh, yeah. Tuesday, uh, the Tuesday and Wednesday are all days.
All day. Are all day meetings. So, I thought we had moved it to Monday in the past.
That was left as a discussion point, I know, after the organizational meeting. If, there were two meeting dates that were in flux, depending on other, like this one, so.
I don't have a problem with that. Get her over.
Just BOC, those are normally a little shorter meetings. Are we okay doing that on Monday? Monday morning at 9:00 AM versus Tuesday?
What's the date?
Seven.
April 7th.
Well, I know you're, I know you're going to miss me, but, I'm going to be back that night.
Okay, well, we'll have it at night, then?
I won't. My wife's not going to allow me to cancel.
Okay. If there's a consensus opinion by the board, we will schedule that BOC for Monday, April 7th at 9:00 AM, changing it from one day.
We still have five of us, right?
I had that on my calendar already.
Yeah, I knew it was up, and I think there was two dates called out, and I just wanted to ensure that's what you wanted to do.
Good catch.
And then, we have had, just FYI for the commission, we've had three presentations from new software vendors for the financial systems. We're getting ready, you'll have a proposal on your next one for a consultant to drive through that project for us and to get the RFP out on the table, so that we can work towards replacing that software package that's sunsetting in '27.
Twenty-seven, okay.
So, just FYI, there's a lot of effort going into making sure we move forward on that. And I know the clerk's been involved, and Treasure's been involved, our office, others too, so it's been good collaboration to date.
Countywide software?
Yeah, and we're looking at ways that'll help improve our efficient, make us more efficient, improve our processes, so, I'm very hopeful. I'm very impressed from a lot of the stuff I've seen, so, and I know payroll is to help on that, help with the employees, being able to get more of their own information in there, not really dependent on one person, so, I like that concept. Put a little bit on us as employees to make sure we keep our stuff up to date and can access all that information. So, really, really excited about that potential.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairperson's report. I am all set. Vice chairperson's report.
Likewise.
Commissioner reports. Commissioner Tunisin?
I'm attending the Health Department meeting this Friday. Tomorrow, we have a steering committee for the Commissioner's meeting in the morning, 10 o'clock, so we'll get some good updates on progress and when possible, start date is, and we'll see how it goes. Starting, I think, hopefully by the end of April. Airport meeting tomorrow afternoon with John.
It got moved as well.
That's right, it did get moved.
Airport meetings tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Good thing you said that, Eric.
You might have been there by yourself.
Thought I got home.
All right, I'm now good, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Campbell?
I attended the CAA. We do have a new president down there. Tim Reese was the outgoing, did a great job. I apologize, I do not have the name down of the new one that took over. Also, I did attend, also attended the Health Department meeting. I'm hoping that Commissioner Getty will touch on that just a little bit. They, they got a couple of very prestigious awards the other day, and I'm hoping that she can help me on that one, so, yep. I knew she would. What a good chairman you are. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Smoker?
Attended transit and 911 yesterday, and we went through the checklist on Hastings Tower, and the last check went out, so.
When is the tower operational?
Well, it's been operational for about a couple of months.
Awesome.
Yep.
Commissioner Getty?
All right, so, we did have a health, Board of Health meeting. We received the Public Health Accreditation Board, approved the accreditation of the Barry Eaton District Health Department. We had someone there, presented the board with a plaque, really a testament to the work that the staff and administration at Barry Eaton District Health is doing. So, quite a process that they go through every few years, and they're continuing to do good work. We also received a copy of their annual report, and I brought it here if anybody wants to take a look at it, but a snapshot of 2024. We also had a materials management planning meeting, and we approved the consultant that we'll be working with to develop the plan. And it was really helpful, we had a representative from Eagle that came in and gave kind of the background of why we're, we're having to do this and why they dissolved the south, or the-
Solid waste.
Solid waste, thank you. Solid Waste Oversight Committee structure and moving towards this material management plan. I would say it was, it was inspiring to our board a little bit, who felt like maybe we were just checking boxes and going through a process, really giving that background of what we'll be able to do to reduce the materials that are having to be put in our landfills. And so, I'm excited to work with Fishback on that process to develop the plan. And I also have the one pager report. They do a nice job of a synopsis of the work that's being done. And I have the Village of Midville tonight.
Fantastic. Commissioner Colton?
I'm all set, thank you.
Commissioner Bassett?
I attended my first Gun Lake Improvement Board meeting, and for the most part, it was an organizational meeting, which is starting the year. But they did have a representative from PLM, which is the company that does all the treatment. And so, it's good education for me about all the invasive species and the different chemicals that they can and propose to use on the lake, so, it was a good, good meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you, commissioners. Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Good morning, commissioners. Rich Tenkey, Executive Director, Barry County Community and Health. I wanted to come this morning just to present kind of a state of the state financially for the behavioral health system in the state of Michigan, provide you a little information on that. So, just to kind of take a step back, we operate in a capitated system, meaning it's not fee-for-service, okay? So, the way that works is Medicaid, or Medicaid and Healthy Michigan, Medicaid expansion, the state of Michigan sends that to regional hubs, PIHPs, prepaid inpatient health plans, that kind of operate like health insurance plans. Those hubs then pass that Medicaid on to CMHs. So, our region is Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health. There's eight CMHs in that region. So, the funding flows from the state of Michigan to Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health to Barry County Community and Health. And the Medicaid is based on Medicaid-eligible individuals within your county. That's how that, that works. So, not necessarily how many people you're serving, how many Medicaid-eligible people are in your county, okay? So, the last couple of years have been, I'll say, a challenge for the behavioral health system. If you remember, during COVID, people were not, people stayed on Medicaid, right? And that, that was not necessarily a bad thing. But then we started coming out of COVID and the reenrollment process started. And so, what, what we found out is individuals dropped off of Medicaid. So, you had less individuals enrolled in Medicaid, which affects funding, right? But we also, and we expected some of that to, to occur, but we also, through that process, are discovering that people were placed in the wrong buckets. So, in Medicaid, there's, I'll just, I'm going to need it, but there's various, I'll just say buckets, right, which affect funding. Like somebody that's disabled, disabled, blind, I'm forgetting the acronym now, is a higher rate than somebody that's in the lower bucket, right? Or like, we found individuals that were maybe in the higher bucket when they went, re-enrolled, were placed in a program called Plan First, which covers pregnancy services. And so, we're working through all that, but all of that affects, affected funding. So, lower amount of people that are eligible, people in the wrong buckets, right? But then we also have expenses where increased inflation from healthcare is at a higher rate than, than quote-unquote "normal inflation." But we see costs for things like residential services, hospital, ABA services, things like that, direct care wages, all these things continue to go up, so we have lower revenue but higher cost, and that's kind of a bad situation, right? So, that's where the state is. There are 10 of these regions. At least half of them are in a deficit situation, including our region, SWIMBA, the last two years. Barry County is okay. There are two CMHs within SWIMBA that are, that are okay, or in the black. Barry County is one of them. There's not enough money for those two regions. The way it works, like, if I underspend my budget, I keep some of that, and then some of the rest I send back to the region. And so, we collectively try to support each other in that manner. The region does the same to the state. So, but with my budget, I don't, the SWIMBA is projected to be 16 to 18 million dollars in the deficit for this year. I'm not, I'm not underspent by 16 million. So, so there's a, there's a, there's a problem there. And so, all of us CEOs within the region are working, we meet twice a, twice a month, and we look at how can we reduce expenses, but how can we also increase revenue? And so, part of that is why I'm bringing this to you, to let you know that this is, this is an ongoing issue that we, myself and my colleagues are working on, where can we reduce expenses? But it's also a revenue, a revenue issue. The legislator has allocated revenue for behavioral health in the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan has not released all of those funds. They have not applied all those funds to the system. If they would, we probably would be okay. The, our association, along with the PIHPs, have developed a, a resolution for commissioners to, county commissions to consider. My point this morning wasn't necessarily to present that to you, but to present you some information on kind of a state of the state financially for behavioral health system in, in the state of Michigan. I can present that to Commissioner Jackson, or I can send that to you if you guys want to look at that for consideration. But, so just to let you know, we, again, emphasize that Barry County, our budget for now is okay, but the region is, as a whole, is really, really struggling. That could bring on additional scrutiny from the state of Michigan, because if you're in the state pockets, which this year, the region is in the state's pocket, then that brings on additional, right, additional auditing, I guess, right, additional I. So, that's my purpose of coming here this morning. If you have other questions or need of additional information, I'd be glad to come back or have a presentation or anything like that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep.
And Rich would normally be speaking under state and county officials as a director, but because we started pretty fast through our agenda, we missed that slot, so that's why I extended time there. Thank you, Rich.
Good morning. Rick Moore, Irving Township, currently Park Commissioner. I want to thank you very much for helping to support Sherwood Park and the new parks that we have as well. Because as I've said before, if you go for a walk in the woods for 20 minutes and forget about your job for a little while, or your taxes for a little while, or something, just for 20 minutes, it can be medically proven that for the next four days, you'll be in better shape, that your blood pressure will be a little lower. And when you live in an apartment in town, if you have a bicycle trail or a park to go to, then you won't feel obligated to go buy a farm someplace, because you want to be out in the country a little bit. You can go for a walk in the woods and then go back to your wonderful apartment, and it's beneficial for the entire community. And I'm slightly prejudiced in that regard, because I'm still a bicycle addict. I love to ride my bicycle instead of drinking alcohol, because I've always said, you only rent that alcohol for 20 minutes or so. You've heard the rest. And it's slightly rude, so I won't continue with that little story, but I've had the most beautiful apartments in Hastings for 49 years, and it's nice that we're getting more apartments. I hope they're almost as beautiful as mine. But mine are in 125 and old houses, and yes, they take a lot of work. I spent all last summer painting. I'm looking forward to painting all this summer painting as well, because I've always said, when you have the rights, who will the job half-done? Now, I can go like this and ride in my bucket 34 feet in the air to paint my houses, and it's wonderful. You'll have to go up in the air 45 feet, like this, these two over here, and I'm going, that was amazing piece of equipment. I wish I had something like that, but I couldn't afford it, because my rent is reasonable. My little old ladies, they only pay 700 to 900 a month, and when I tell them that others are charging 1500 a month, they're scared a bit. And I don't want to scare my little old ladies. They used to be, I was the youngest guy in the neighborhood, shoveling the sidewalks for six city blocks. Now, I'm the oldest guy in the neighborhood, and I still do the same thing. Why? Because I go for a walk in the woods every one while, and quit worrying about the $16,000 I have to pay in property taxes and go for a ride on my bicycle and forget about it all. So, once again, I want to thank you all for the, supporting the parks, because it's a big reason for moving to Barry County, and as we grow older, we see farms being developed and potential parkland disappearing. So, please, we need to protect the parks we have. Thank you very much. Rick Moore, and I support this message.
So, if I'm walking in the woods for 20 minutes and I see a bear, is that going to help my heart rate stay low?
Yes. Thank you.
If you see one in Barry County, I want to see a picture.
Thank you, Rick.
Anyway, I actually attended the Michigan DNR grant writing process for parks and things back when I was, as trustee. We actually brought in grants for our older parks. And also, when you go to these township meetings, hear about our emergency services and how much they're struggling. So, the more government property, the more property government takes over, the more strain it is on those emergency services. So, this is part of the process that you've got to encompass and think about when you're taking over government, you know, government continues to take over, then you just say, well, we're just having more skin in the game from the taxpayers. This is not the appropriate way to do it. So, that is a reason, when you continue to ignore what's going on, and you say, well, private property, which reduces revenues to EMSs, revenues to your sheriff's department, revenues to counties. There's a big picture here that you need to start looking at, instead of just saying, well, we're gonna do some more parks. You still have a jail system to build, and it should not come up more money out of the taxpayers', uh, pockets. That's how restructuring is incredibly important. You have buildings that you had taxed, that you've turned over into, uh, non, sold to nonprofits, probably should have went and helped that revenue stream to help the emergency services of Berry County. We don't hear much about that in here. We want to have happy things. Let's talk about parks. We're gonna ignore the emergency services until it gets to a dire strait, and we're gonna say, well, skin in the game for the taxpayers, because we choose, not want to, but you know, we choose to make those bad decisions that, well, we'll just have to wait and see if safe, public safety is the number one issue or not for Berry County. So, once again, I'll be talking about this at the Village of Nashville. I've talked about it at Cast and Township. Government doesn't need to take over more properties. Government, government needs to have less properties to help afford these services. So, it's incredibly important. The DNR has properties in Nashville. When Nashville wanted to do something with it, the DNR said, no, you can't do that. It's our property. Well, the DNR really needs to put that back on the, the tax rolls, because we have emergency services that are paid for EMS, fire, EMS operations, the district library out there. The more government property, owned property, the less revenues you have for the services needed in communities. That Bailey Preserve, Nature Preserve, was part of that problem. 159 acres could have had revenues coming in. It could have went to private nature preserve. So, when you're saying, oh, let's do this, it doesn't make sense to me, looking at your, and while we're trying to have another village for emergency services, but we like to play.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? I don't even say thank you. Good morning. Uh, this is an invite, again, for you guys to, uh, if you want to do a ride-along with my deputies, come on, do a ride-along. Remember, Ben Geiger took us up on that, and we didn't get him killed, so, uh, we'll, we'll keep you safe.
Eat here.
So, you don't know. Vivian, I know she, uh, did a couple of ride-alongs, and I thought Hugh Gibson did too, but I was not dating myself. That was back in 2005, 2006, something like that. And same thing, Paul and the Corrections Row, I think they'd appreciate it. Uh, just seeing what they do and seeing how busy, or not busy they are. So, invites out, and, uh, hope you take us up on it. Thank you. Oh, by the way, uh, guys, maybe we can move the jail out, the new jail out to the park. Everybody's gonna use them to lay with them on the lawns and everything, but, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Do you got any more, um, presentations coming up on body games? I was invited to two. Couldn't make either one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we had one. You're sick, yeah. Uh, I gotta check. I think, oh, that company down on Battle Creek, I forgot their name.
You will let me know if you have enough, yeah?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And let me know too.
Sure. Thank you.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Chair, appreciate it. Commissioners, thank you. My name is Derek Mathis. I'm here on behalf of Charter Communications, uh, or Spectrum, as you also may hear us called. Um, I am here to ask or request a letter of support for our BEAD application. Um, just kind of a big picture, and I know I only have a couple of minutes, but, uh, BEAD, or the state of Michigan received 1.5, almost 1.6 billion dollars in federal funding to expand high-speed internet to unserved and underserved locations. Um, the grant cycle is upon us, letters of support, or us a stronger application. Um, so, just a little bit about Charter or Spectrum. Uh, Spectrum offers four services. We offer high-speed internet, uh, video services, uh, mobile services, and traditional landline telephones. Uh, we are in 76 out of, uh, 84, or excuse me, uh, out of 83 counties, we are in 76 of them. Uh, we've been in Berry County and in the state of Michigan for, uh, just about 40 years, um, in six communities here in Berry. Our BEAD application, again, is to serve unserved and underserved locations here in Berry County. Um, we have identified seven different municipalities in the county, um, Leighton, Thornapple, Yankee Springs, Irvin, Rutland, Hope, and a small portion of the Village of Midtown. Um, I think the Chamber, I know, uh, they have pointed us in the direction, and Eric, the county admin, has also. Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to, to thank you guys for allowing me to be here and make this request. Um, just a little bit in regards to our services, uh, since 2019, we have offered, uh, gigabyte services to the home. Uh, we do all fiber, or all of our new build will be, uh, fiber. Um, and, um, and yeah, do you have any questions for me, I guess?
Um, not during public comment. However, afterwards, if you would like to get with, um, Eric Zuzgar, our administrator, myself, this board has been in support of doing anything we can to bring internet into Berry County, so.
Beautiful. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Chair, they'll let us wait for you downstairs.
Waiting for me downstairs, okay? We're fast, Derek. Additional public comment? Hearing done. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Bassett?
I'm all set.
Commissioner Colton? Commissioner Getty?
I guess my only comment is, um, is that I'm so proud of, of our county and, and these commissioners, that we can walk and chew gum at the same time, and we can look after our parks, and we can look after our finances at the same time.
Commissioner Smoker? Commissioner Hatfield?
I'm good.
Commissioner Campbell?
I will miss you all. But I'm gonna be missing-
Nice one.
-next week. My wife has approved it.
The boss.
Now, I'm gonna be missing the following week too. So, I apologize for not being here. I'll try to make it up when I get back.
Go have a good time.
Thank you.
Get us on tan.
I will not think of any of you.
I'm all set.
All set. Thank you. I am all set as well. Thank you. Great discussion today. Appreciate you doing your research, especially on the PACE program. As we have discussed four times over now, that PACE is a tool to help us bring construction into the county, to attract developers, to solve our housing crisis. So, I'm excited to see where that takes us with copper-